Do you want me to pledge allegiance for gay law?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the agenda, first thing is to approve the agenda, it looks like a light agenda tonight, which I think we're all happy with, being that we have a workshop on Thursday. You know, Rick said he was horny tonight, and I can obviously see it, you can tell by his tone. So I got a motion to approve the agenda as presented, does anyone have any comments or questions? Okay, I got seconded by Sean Ryan. If there are no other comments or questions, I'll in favor say aye. Any opposition? Okay, the agenda is approved. First thing on the agenda is, every year, we always have people who have served on our boards and commissions, I don't want to say retire, I'm just gonna say take some time off, because maybe we can ask them to come back or not, but I don't know if everyone's aware of that, our boards and commissions are all voluntary, and they do serve a great purpose to the city council. The council uses them as advisory, and I like to say that the boards and commissions do all the heavy lifting, and give us the easy job of approving or disapproving things because of the job they do so well. So we have four individuals who are, as I said, not retiring, but are just taking some time off, maybe they'll come back as board commissioners, and we invited them all tonight here for recognition, and I see we have one here, we have Terry. So I'm gonna call Terry Murtah to front here and give her a certificate of recognition, and Patrick, you got your camera ready?
Of course.
Terry, an appreciation for your work on the park board, and I think if the last, was it the last year or the last couple of years, you served as the...
Two years, yeah.
The chair. I want to thank you for your hard work, and an appreciation for not only your work on the board, but also how great our park systems look, and you had a vital role in that. So, thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you, Terry.
And I'm just gonna mention the other three individuals who decided that they did not get their picture in the New Prague Times. We have Nathan Inge, Park Board Representative, we have Jay Shanaback, Gulf Board Member, and we have Matthew Godaddy, Dining Commission. So if you do see any of those, along with Terry, for the Bu Republic out there, thank them for their service to our boards and commissions. Again, they are unsung heroes to the council, so thank you very much. Next, Ken, are you gonna take population update?
Thank you. For those that have not been on the council prior to this year, every April 1st, we get a estimate from the State Demographer and the Metropolitan Council, even though we're not part of the Metropolitan Council, for our population in the city. And you'll see obviously on here that they're estimate, that they just gave us this from April 1 of 2018, so it's about a year behind, and we'll continue to have another estimate again on April 1 of 2020, that will be for this past April year in 2019. So we're always a little over a year behind. But as you can see, we had a pretty good jump in that estimate, and I think I noted at the meeting last year, we went over our estimate, we hadn't seen that jump yet for the big year of permits we had in 2017. Well, obviously, this will, this has made that data be incorporated in the estimate, and we've shown an increase in population of 331 people from our 2017 estimates, and now up over 8,056 population estimated in New Prague. And then the households correspondingly jumped as well, again with all those same family and town home units, so we jumped by 182 households. I do want to note that Praha Village, the numbers in there, the 91 units, are not included in any of these estimates yet at this point. They'll start picking those up, obviously, in the estimate that we'll have, and receive next year, but even then, it'll only be a few, because they didn't have people move in until, you know, February of 2019. So they'll only capture a couple months of that. But anyway, we're still a little bit below our conference of plan estimate of about 8,600 people and 3,200 households, so we're pretty close. But we'll get trued up here, April 1 of 2020, with the census that will occur, and that data will not be released until what I'm being told is March of 2021. So until then, I think these are good numbers, finally showing the jump in the numbers we've had in new homes, and our persons per household, we've talked about this in years past, they had been estimating our numbers much lower than 2.65 people per household, which is our average. They had cut that back a number of years ago, and we had to fight and filed an appeal, and we got that jump back up, and I think they've held that since that time. So I'll think, very happy with the numbers that we have in front of us tonight.
So Ken, obviously, we're not part of the Met Council, but they do include us in this, for what reason?
Because of our portion within Scott County, Metropolitan Council likes to have that total included in their metropolitan regional area statistics, so they do include that data from north of Main Street in that total. Otherwise, we would just be all State Demographer, and actually, we do get a separate estimate that's just State Demographer, but they actually rely on that information anyway, so they match up.
So we don't have infighting of...
Correct.
All right, I just wanted kind of a clarification of that. Thank you. Could you?
Does that mean we're gonna change the sign?
You know, we have to pay for those changes on the signs in between census years, MNDOT will pay when the 2021, or the 2020 is done. So that's up to the council, if that's something you want to change. We've changed it one time, just put decals over the signs.
Yeah, the decals, that's what I was thinking.
What the problem is, is they're not reflective, and they don't match us, and MNDOT actually strongly encourages us doing that.
Okay. I've seen a bunch of other cities that have done that.
Yeah, they do. They don't like when cities do that, but I would say at this point, we should just wait until the data comes out in March of 2021. It really doesn't mean much, other than...
Well, I was just thinking that one out by, by the Ford dealership, it's all corroded or faded over.
That they can bring up and see if they can do it as maintenance.
And then fix the potholes on the road.
Can you mention the 2.65 family size, but it doesn't seem like that's reflected in the year?
So if you actually saw the formula that makes up the calculation for households and people, it's about a page long, it's very convoluted, so you can't just simply take households times 2.65 and get your number of population. I can show you the whole estimate, I've gone over that with the demographer a few different times, and I don't know how they come up with these calculations, it's based on occupancy, it takes into account a certain number of units that are built, and they don't figure they'll be fully occupied and...
Oh, I guess it'll be trued up once we get the census.
Correct.
I know somewhere in the school bond issues in the past, they, I just remember the 2.54 stuck in my mind.
That had been a number that had been put out there, I think about five years ago within the estimates, but that had trended lower, much lower, actually than our 2010 census number, where we were closer to 2.7 people per household in the city of New Prague. So we've always had a little bit higher number per household, for whatever reason, and that was one thing the state, when we questioned that initially, because they had recalculated our census numbers, and we dropped population, and I was like, no, that isn't...
It's been said in the past, it was a high percentage of Catholics. You can quote from this on that. How many of us are Catholic? Anyone else have any other questions for Ken regarding the census update or the population update? All right, thank you. Mike, are you gonna introduce our distinguished guest?
Yeah, I will, just real briefly, we have with us tonight Mr. Terry Heath of Baker Tilly, that's still hard to make that change from Springstead, but I guess it is now truly Baker Tilly. And we've asked Terry here tonight to go over with the council, the proposed issuance and sale of general obligation bonds, the Series 2019A, in the principal aggregate amount of $3.15 million. I'll have Terry come up and go through, and then we'll try to supplement and answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Mayor Nickley, and members of the city council, it's a pleasure to be here this evening to walk through the upcoming bond sale. I see that there is a handout prepared from Mr. Johnson, that is, provides really good background, it talks about the issuance and sale of the general obligation bonds, first looking at the main portion. In total, the bond issue size is 3,150,000, and of that, $2,495,000 is for the 2019 street and utility projects, and $655,000 of it is for equipment certificates. This evening, you're being asked to authorize the sale of bonds, and the sale will occur on July 15th at 11:30 in the morning with approval that evening by the city council at 6:00 P.M. The graph on the page, on page one, the bottom of page one of our recommendation, provides a nice line showing that interest rates are down quite a bit this year, so you're timing for selling bonds. Of course, you sell bonds when you need the money for the projects, but it's fortunate when it works out so that interest rates are dropping right in time for the sale. To talk a little bit about the general obligation bonds for the street project, that has a 15-year payback time, it's about 42% of that debt service will be paid from assessments, about 20% will also be paid from utilities, and the remaining 38% will come from a tax levy. So there's a lot of funding. We talked earlier that actually, the total project cost for this, including the county, about, or more, and so we could have grossed it up to show the entire project. The numbers that you're seeing this evening are really the city's portion of that overall project. The estimated interest rate for the entire project is 2.62, and that is a blended rate. This part of the bond issue is for 15 years. There's also an equipment certificate piece, the $655,000, and that has five years of repayment, it's an actual six-year term, and that interest rate is 2.28. And so that's how the whole blended rate of 2.62 is achieved. There is a covered letter written by Mr. Johnson that explains the individual items that are being financed, the biggest chunk of it is tractor truck, skid loader, and other items listed in his document. These bonds will be rated again, and the city's credit rating, they're rated by Standard and Poor's at AA+ , and again, that's a very high rating, the only ratings higher would be, they're AA, sorry, and you could only go to AA+, and then AAA. So these will sell very well on the market, and coupled with the interest rates that are moving in your favor, we are looking forward to your sale on July 15th, and happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Mike, for you, what is the total cost of the project that, you know, with the city portion in?
What we're covering here, the bonding portion is what's shown on the summary of the issue, the sources and uses, you'd have to add $1.62 million if we had the county portion of the project added to that. We had debate on how to do this, and this we kind of let just focus on the city, because both of the sources and uses, it would be $1.62 million for Scott County on both sides of that equation.
Terry, is there any call provisions on the equipment certificates, or can you get out any any time?
The bonds are coupled into one issue, and the call date would be...
So everything is eight years?
Right, eight years, but of course, those maturities will be done before then. So ineffective would it be if a call for them?
The cost of issuance, I was just curious, for the equipment certificates, for the cost of issuance, is that just spread out between the different needs, or is the actual cost of issuance for your equipment certificates $11,900?
It's allocated through taking all of the cost of issuance, and so included in that is your bond council, Baker Tilly fee, rating agency, the paying agent, everybody that has an upfront fee, and then it's distributed between the two bond issues. And so what we typically find is that the interest rates that you can get on a bond, a tax exempt bond, you know, at 2.28 is, and that factors in, their share of the cost of true interest costs factors in that rate, so 2.28, it's, so if we couple it with another bond issue, we find out that it's usually, well, it is, less money, because the lower interest rate makes up for the cost of issuance. But if we did it on our own, then we might be talking to you about going to a bank, because maybe we could cut out the issuance cost, you get probably a higher rate, but it would be a better, more cost-effective way to go.
So if I understand that correctly, if we weren't doing the equipment certificates, the $11,900 would we just spread out through the rest of it? So, in a sense?
No, there would be, there would be an apportionment because of different types. So what we do is take a second sale for this, subtract out 4,000 for doing them together. So I could let you know, I mean, it's so...
So there is, there is some of the $11,000 that is specific to the equipment certificates? Okay, but is that some number less than 11,000?
Yes, so when we couple in that, there's a, we take $4,000 off, whatever our price would be if this were just any issue, and then, because they're all in the same VOS done at the same time. So there'd be some portion of that, if we've gone to a bank, of course, not the credit rating, but the bond attorney and negotiation and some of our fee. It's very minimal by subtracting that out and coupling it.
Yeah, it's just, once it's small dollar, like 655, you have to start thinking about what I view as closing costs, or those types of things.
Right.
Because you're paying about 3% in fees to borrow 660, 655,000. But you're also getting a lower interest rate as well.
Well, the interest rate is lower, but the total cost is 2.8, 2.9, with the fees and everything. But that is true.
And we had debate about whether we included it with a separately or whatnot, and talking with Terry, the overall feeling was that the minus of the total, or the size of the bond issuer, was more beneficial to us longer term, than trying to separate that out and handle it differently. And then you mean lessen some of the financial advisory fee, that you're gonna be paying to put together again the documents and the legal stuff to be able to go and do that separately, if that's all we were doing. And then if we weren't doing any of the street, or the sewer, or the stormwater, then yeah, likely, because it would be less than about a million dollars, we wouldn't be doing all the GO stuff.
Yeah, no, I totally get it, I used to do this.
Terry typically buys the purchases of bonds. Does Baker Tilly buy any?
No.
You don't look at only any?
No, we're not allowed to, we don't have an investment, they don't do that.
Okay, I guess we're just kinda curious.
No, it's institutional investors will buy that, so it would be, you usually have a pretty good list of bidders, but it would be Baird, it would be, you know, J.P. Morgan...
The standard ones. I was just curious, I was just curious if Baker Tilly ever held certain notes themselves.
No, we're not an underwriting firm, so it's all underwriters who bid, so we're completely independent from that. That's a good question, we have a new organization, I learn more every day, but I do know...
Well, that's why I asked, because it is a bigger company now.
That's right.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions for Terry?
The interest rates are dropping, and you seem to be, is there any benefit of doing it right now, as opposed to delaying it a month or two to wait? I know we don't want to try to time the market, but none of us would be sitting up here, I'm sure, but, but it does seem like there is a pretty strong downward trend, is partly leaving some money on the table by doing this, issuing them in July as opposed to September, or August, maybe, or...
Well, that is a great question, and like, you know, and it's a crystal ball, but we can't tell you that interest rates have dropped a lot since last year, and so the clients that I'm working with now, I'm advising all of them, this is a bird of the hand, the one thing you know is you have super, very low rates right now, so you can remove interest rate risk from all the other things, the price of the project, things that can come up. So if you can lock in now, as you see on that trend, and could it go even lower? Yes, but I, you know, the risk that you have is could it go even higher, and can you afford it? And this way, you're locking it in and getting the rate today when you need the money.
So with this action, we're locking in today?
No, you're locking into interest rates in a month, whenever, on the 15th, if it's received.
Okay, so we still could get some benefit of declining rates at this point.
That's my hope, I don't like to come back and say they've gone up.
We know that it's not your doing, but...
But you'll get line for it.
That's right.
Line for it goes up, no credit if it goes down.
That's the job of the consultant, take all the heat.
Any other questions? What's that? Is that the charts?
Were you gonna review the charts, Terry, to you?
Or do you want Patty to review? Did you do these charts, Patty? Terry did?
Actually, I did have a question on that chart. If I can't answer the question, Patty will. Up here, but what we tried to do was to give you an overview as we try to take a look at the planning, and a long-term direction of where we go with our debt planning, is that page one is the existing debt levy that we have at present, that's on the books, that is supported by the annual tax levy that we have. And what this is, when you take a look at the calendar year below, that is the levy year for payable the following year. So you see 2019, that's levy 2019, pay 20. So we'll adopt that in our budget this fall to pay in 2020. So every year, you look at that, it's levy 2020, pay 21, and so on going forward. And so as you take a look at that, you can see we've got about 10 years on the outstanding existing levies, as the, as the picture stands right now. And you can see that there's a precipitous drop going forward in levy 2020, pay 21. So then what we tried to do was to take that and to look at the 2019 bond levy that you're looking at at present, and then we tried to factor that in and layer that in a little bit on top of the existing debt. And so that is on graph number two, which is contained in yellow.
And that's just our general levy, half the assessments. Right, this is just what we budget each year.
The assessments are repaid by the...
Assessments, so... Right, but this isn't any of the, like, stormwater portion, or...
No, this is just the general debt service levy, anything related to stormwater, sanitary, sewer, water, those are all separate. This is just the community, community-wide debt levy.
So does it include the assessment for a person that lives on 37 that's being assessed for...
This is only for those portions that are not individually assessed to a property owner, but are picked up citywide.
Thank you.
So in this, just to give you an example, we've got assessments of about 1.263 million, and we've got general levy of just under $600,000 for those portions of the Millan Overlake projects, the roundabouts, and our portion of County Road 37, that's being picked up by the entire community that is included in this levy. But anything storm, sanitary, water, all of those are separately under each of those enterprise funds.
And why the big jump in 2027? Are we expecting something?
No, that was...
It drops for a number of six years, and then all of a sudden, there's this spike, or... Was it fire equipment or something, balloon or something?
Okay, I don't...
I can't answer that, that would have been in some of the structuring that was done in the past, and so I'd have to take a look at, it would be a combination of all of our previous issues, and just how they happen to come together. I don't know that there was anything specifically done that way, but it just happened to work that way.
Okay, I was just thinking that we were planning on a new fire equipment or something at a million dollars.
This has nothing to do with...
This page, this page one is basically just all of the existing debt, and there is no capital equipment in this.
Okay.
This is all of the, all of the basic construction projects that we've done in the past, and the portion that's applicable to Phillips Square Apartments, that's included in this existing debt service levy.
Okay.
And the fire station, all of that is included in this levy.
Right, okay. And again, that, maybe it is an equipment, but is there a need for a fire station, or are you guys planning on...
But this has nothing to do with planning, this has a plan...
Well, I just wanna know why this jump, this...
This has nothing to do with planning, because these are existing bonds in service.
Right, I know, but if we're, if we're going down on a series of seven years before, and then all of a sudden, there's this big, I just wanna get a handle on...
I'd have to go back and take all of the previous debt issues, and lay them out side by side, to be able to answer your question as to why that one particular year is at the level that it is.
It could be a balloon or something.
Yes, a combination of all of the previous issues, just getting...
A balloon or a couple of...
Okay, that makes sense, but you typically, they're of the same type of terms, so when you see them, I, I, it may be it was from five years ago, that, that is, is gonna spike it.
I think what we had tried to do, Sean, is, we looked at what our debt is every year when we started, you know, when we had our CIPs, and we said, well, if we see these dropping down, let's pay it less at the beginning and more toward the end, so that we could kind of level it off a little bit. And I believe that on 2027, if I'm not mistaken, it probably has something to do with our EMS building.
But just as a sign, all of the typical reconstruction projects that we've done, that we've picked up any, community debt-wide debt service levy, those have been financed at 15 years. So whatever it was, any of the reconstruction projects that we've done since I came in in 2018, have always had a term of 15 years. The fire station was 20 years, Phillips Square Apartment paddock was 40...
Right.
40 years. So just layering all of those repayment schedules together, ended up with what this picture looks like. It wasn't necessarily by design, that one year.
Right.
It just happened to be on the tail end, if I add up all of the different bond issues, this is what the picture looks like.
Okay. Well, and I know we have a number of years yet before this does spike, but I was, I guess, my next point was, is Terry watching to see if we should be refinancing any of those previous bonds that we've done in the past?
We do that every year.
We do that every year.
All right, just, I just wanna make, you know, you see it here, and I just wanna get the discussion out, so we're all aware that we're looking at it, and make sure that we're doing our due diligence.
Well, we do do those kinds of things, that's part of our job, and we try to make sure that we're diligent about that, and we have conversations with Terry every year on doing that. So that first page is just the existing picture, and so when you take a look at it, that, you know, if you go back historically, and I didn't show any of the previous picture, is we've been at a million dollars for, at least, I think, the last four or five years, at least, if you go back in that history. So when you look at that, is that it's going to be starting to be able to drop contingent upon the discussions as you start to look at the second page, which incorporates the existing debt levy, with the 2019 bond issue, and of that, when you take a look at how that layers out, is the street portion, which is about 600,000, that's repaid over 15 years, and the capital equipment certificates, as you've heard, is basically a five-year payout over a six-year finance period. So that's how then we're able to kind of begin to layer that in for page two. Now, when you start to go to page three, what we're trying to do, as I said in my memo, is we're trying to take a look at the upcoming anticipated street reconstruction projects, looking ahead to about 2025... looking ahead to about 2025.
Does this include the 2020 project?
Yes. I've got, it's right in front of me, excuse me. We're trying to look at the projects as we best know them right now. And looking at the projected levy is for the improvement projects from 2020 through 2026. And then with some possible estimated projects in '27 through '29. But what that doesn't include potentially is a possible Columbus Avenue turnback project with the county, maybe in '21, we're not sure. They're pushing awful hard to redo Columbus Avenue from Main Street all the way out to 12th. We were hoping to take a break in 2020 of not having to do much planning, but it may be one that we may not have a whole lot of choice, that they're pushing awful hard and we're trying to push it away. But as you drive it, you can see the condition, it's not in the greatest of conditions. So we may have to find a way, because it's likely that there would be utility replacement in the section probably from Main Street all the way up to, I believe, about Fourth Street. And then beyond that, I'm uncertain. And then pavement restoration and reclamation all the way out to 12th Street. So that's not included in there. And then long-term, there's also the potential project turnback on the Seward County, on First Avenue Southeast. That could occur sometime after 2022. So what we've tried to do, taking the engineer's estimates and including projects going forward from 2020, is we tried to add that in, and that is what kind of that new debt looks like in red. So we've done some forecasting, trying to add those in. And again, using that 15-year timeframe. And then secondly, the whole goal in this process was to keep it at or around about a million, no more than about a million dollars.
So when does the 2020 bond debt start being paid up?
The 2020, we may not have to, as we look at the financing makeup of all of those, we're going to have about $600,000 that we can choose to either go city debt service levy or we could go state aid. And so in this piece here, we're looking at, from our preliminary forecasting here and just trying to run numbers, is we did it with taking that to state aid with no levy.
For the Main Street project?
Debt service levy, community-wide, that you've got assessments in there, you've got the grants, the grant in there, the STP, the state funding, the two-county funding in there. And so it may not require debt service. But it's a $600,000 number, give or take, and we've got two choices to go either way, either debt service levy or state aid.
Okay.
But yes, we have factored that in with all the other projects going forward, based on the preliminary numbers that we have from the city engineer. And so we at least tried to take a look at what would that picture look like going forward with the idea that '27, '28, and '29 are too far out there. We really don't have anything on the CIP really beyond 2025 at this point with any, any, any degree of real accuracy at this point. So it's our best attempt to show you is that first page, here's what's existing. Here's added in the 2019. And then from our knowledge of the road construction projects, this is what that would look like. So then what that does is that gets you to the last page. In talking with Terry and Patty Kettles, the financial analyst in her office, is, okay, you've got other projects on the table, whether that be recreation facilities, whether that be New City Hall, or whatever else might come up that's not on the drawing board, is that we tried to take a look at from a planning standpoint, if you philosophically try to leave the debt service levy at or around that million dollars, is you have some monies in there, as well as should back up the other pieces that's not in there, it will be whether we have to finance any future capital expenses through further capital equipment certificates, just like we had to do this year. That may have to be factored in. So we've got some growth room in there for other types of projects from a planning standpoint that philosophically and fundamentally, if you buy in and leave that at that level, that when you take a look at the other construction projects that are coming, some of the other projects that haven't yet been identified, any capital equipment replacement, we've got some growth room and some planning capability in there, even on top of the street construction projects that we reasonably might be forthcoming.
So the capital equipment, is this the first time we've done the city standpoint?
No.
Issue this?
No, that we bought the
Sewer jet machine.
It was on a capital equipment. We bought some golf equipment on capital equipment certificates. And so the choice there is, is either we have to have sufficient room within the general fund budget to pay cash for it, or we've got to go to the bank and finance it, just like you or I buy a car. So what that's attempting to show, and you can see by the number on the side, is that there's some room left over at the end of that picture, the area in green, trying to take a look at what room have we got to work with, at least beyond the street projects that we reasonably believe are going to be coming, based on the engineer's estimates.
I'm still confused on the 2020. It's a 12 million, 13 million dollar project, right? And we're only going to get in that a million a year for their portion?
And that may be changing already, we may get all theirs upfront.
Okay, is that what, is that why we're not adding, if we get up there's all upfront? Okay, because I was, I was the assumption that we're going to get a million each year, and I'm thinking, well, where are we going to come up with the remaining 12 million to pay everybody without bond issuance?
Do you think you're going to get that money upfront? Is that in lieu of progressive payments to them, or what is that?
Yes, they've had some projects that they pushed back, and that I don't have an answer specifically as of today, but the latest message per our discussion is that they may have all of their funds upfront. And that's going to be somewhere between six and seven million dollars.
And then the remaining each, like water and electric bill bond for their portion?
Correct.
And then that's where you get down to the
Yep.
Six hundred to seven hundred thousand dollars that
Either would be a community debt service levy or
I got it, yeah, at first I'm thinking, well, but that changes the scenario there.
So it was just an attempt to show you that we're not sitting idly by, and that as we look at doing debt planning, we're trying to show you kind of what's on the table, what's coming, and what's plausible from that perspective. And that, you know, when you look at the first page, everything in blue, thinking, well, we're going to be a lower than the levy, and we're going to look real good, but, you know, that assumes we don't do anything going forward, which is really unrealistic. And so then you add in the piece that we're looking at this year, and the area in red that we know is possibly yet coming in the coming years. And then that leaves you some gap in there for some of the other projects that haven't even been decided on at this point. So it's just a showpiece to show you that we've at least looked at it, that Patty and Terry and Patty Kettles have developed a model that we can play with, adjusting different components here. If we look at the items in red or what might come in the area in green, is we have the abilities now that we've created the model that we can adjust that and modify that based on what gets added and over what number of years, and, you know, with our assistance, how we layer that in.
Good, great info.
It's a tool, us tool did used to exist 10 years ago.
Yep.
I appreciate the graphs, I think it's very helpful.
Thanks.
Very good. Terry, I have a question. Are most of our call dates six years or previous issues? Are they pretty standard, David?
Call dates on a 15-year bond would be probably eight or nine years on. And I'm just looking, I'm just double checking that we have prepayment for this one. It's in, it would be callable in 2028, so that'd be, it looks like about a nine-year call. Eight or nine is pretty standard for a 15-year.
Are we pretty much using a standard? Are we trying to kind of juggle our call dates so we have something that we're able to refinance? If we have to, or are we just going with pretty much a standard call date?
The proposal is to go with the standard unless you have, unless there's something that you know you're getting a big payment. Now, if we know, for instance, that in year three, you're going to get a balloon payment or some big payment from the state, or we absolutely know somebody's going to pay something up early. And typically, you've got a levy-supported portion every single year. And we go with the standard amount, call date, because of a class two in basis points. So if you start pushing up from that, we're going to see folks with that are holding it for a shorter time, give you 10%, 10 basis points more, or 20 basis points if you start pushing up. So unless there's a reason that we know of to deviate from the standard, we typically go with eight or nine years. And if you're up for five years, unless, again, if there's some funding source that we have to match, we'll adjust it.
Yeah, I'm not familiar with what we have outstanding, but to Sean's point, if we wanted, if we wanted the ability to refinance, we might not have any issues that are even callable. So my point was only just to consider staggering if it's an issue. I understand that there may be a cost to it.
And I should note that the tax law changed at the end of 2017, so they don't allow crossover refunding. So that, there was a technique that allowed you, if you were within a year or two, and it still made sense to issue a second bond and pay a lower interest rate on that, still carry the other bond on a crossover date. You could lock into today's low rate, and then it would just convert at a date in the future. And that actually worked because of, if you get a low enough interest rate. Well, the new tax law doesn't allow any crossovers anymore.
Okay.
So the new, and so we have to wait until they're actually maturity coming up. And so the call dates, we've checked all of those, and there isn't anything available that would be feasible at this point. And the other question about, oh, the five-year calls, or they have equipment. Typically, unless there's a reason, five years is pretty short already for folks to handle. So if you were doing just the equipment certificate, we probably wouldn't have brought a call date to that, to you on that. But we look for opportunities to do just what you said. And when you issue debt, this year, next year, the following year, it creates a staggering, you know, the staggered time that you could call bonds. So we'll keep looking for those opportunities.
Thank you.
Anyone have any other questions for Terry or Mike?
Patty's the one who spent time with Patty Kettles and creating the graphs, so she did all that work.
Thank you, Patty.
Did a great job of coloring in the lines, too. I'm really proud of you. You really improved. If there is no other questions or comments, I guess I'll make a motion to approve the issuance and sell the general obligation bonds, Series 2019-8. And I got a second by Rick Seiler. Yes?
Page two, thanks to Councilmember Maggie Bass, under Section 2.02, on the second line.
This is actually what, in the actual bond?
In the resolution.
In the resolution, the word county should actually be city. Section 2.02, second line. Middle of the page.
Oh, okay.
The word county should be city.
Okay, I'll make my motion to, to make that change. Rick said he would second that. There's no other comments, questions? All in fair, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, any opposition? Kenny passes five zero. Thank you, Terry. Next on agenda, consent agenda. Does anyone have any questions on any items in the consent agenda? If not, I guess I'll look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
John move.
Okay, I got a motion by Bruce Wolf, second by, or Maggie, you want to second that?
I'll second, yes.
Okay, second by Maggie Bass. There's no other comments, questions? All in fair, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposition? We're already in the miscellaneous section. Ken, now that you're the cameraman, you got anything?
I do, the Belzer annexation was formally approved by the state on Friday last week, so we officially have the two dealerships, Chevy and Ford, in city land. So just wanted to let you know that.
When do you, are they going to start working on the, moving the utilities down there?
We are still finalizing the plan with, or they're finalizing the plan with exactly how they're going to do that. I don't have an exact date. There are some wetland permitting items that need to be wrapped up yet, and we're getting there, just kind of a slow-moving process. So they're doing what they can outside of the wetland areas for the time being. And I wish I could give you a date, but I just, I just can't. Hopefully within a month.
How's the roundabout there on Altonwood? I guess I've been over there.
We are still waiting for the final revised plan from INS engineers on behalf of KA Witt to look at the wetland drainage issue. And they're just putting some finishing touches on that, and then that will go back to SEHR engineer. And then, once it's finalized, they'll probably get, working on that again. We're hoping that'll coincide with the utility work, because Witt has actually been hired by Belzers to extend utilities out through that area. So we would have our inspector on site, and that could all be looked at appropriately at one time. So I think that should work out well.
Did you get ahold of those guys?
I have not, not from the email today that they sent, no.
Yeah, I saw that today, too, so I just was curious if you had.
Yep, I had not yet. I was waiting for an update, and got that at the end of the day.
Anything else?
Nope.
Patrick?
No.
Patty?
No.
Come on. Michael?
Just a few. Your packet is a flyer to the chamber, working with ourselves, and Representative Vogel and Senator Dreheim. There will be a town hall forum on Saturday, July 20th, at 9:00 a.m. that we'll host upstairs here on a Saturday. Probably at the LMC, the League of Cities Conference next week, Wednesday through Friday up in Duluth. You should have on your table, we got an invite from the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities again, that you have in front of you, the way of registration, if anybody's interested in attending. You could see that they have a good year from their perspective on the LGA change that has occurred, but their advocacy is on about five specific items that are in there. So that's just an information line that came in the mail today. And we're also hoping to close on the purchase of the State Burlet, I'm hoping, late next week.
Okay, anything else? Barb?
No.
Maggie?
No, thank you.
Sean?
I was going to ask Glenn, but maybe you can ask me about the potholes again on Main Street?
We have communicated that to
I just want to make sure, I want to be able to tell them that, hey, I brought it up, and then this is what the cities have
Our staff, before you even notify us, is on the phone with in that maintenance staff, letting them know what the condition of Main Street is through town.
Okay, thank you.
So they get that word before you even think of calling us. And we try to take care of that based on watching what the condition is. But as you know, that they have basically said that they do not want us taking care of batching potholes on Main Street, that that is their responsibility, and we're not going to argue with that, and make them constantly aware of that. And yet we can't control the schedule of how they
Yeah, and I wasn't attacking you, again, like, I just, I get asked about it every day. I need to ask you, that's my job as a representative, and that's why I brought it up. And then there's a lot of people that still don't understand that it's not our responsibility, that it's the state of Minnesota's responsibility. I try to tell as many people
But just so that you do know, is that our staff does take that, you know, we take oversight and know what that impact is, and the questions that come from that process, and do the very best that we can to try to get that done as quick as we can working with them.
I'm sure you guys do, and I appreciate that, that hard work. But again, at what point, how many, after how many weeks of them ignoring it, do we just not know and throw it in there? I know they don't like it, what's the ramification? Is there any, I mean, what, you know?
Because if something does happen, then it's a question of, is what occurred based on what was there, or what the city did, or whatnot? If somebody ends up with a vehicle, accident or something, because of that, we don't need to get brought into that.
Yeah, I think, I agree. I think if it's their responsibility, you don't want to mess with their
If somebody loses fire or a tie rod gets broken or whatnot,
you know, who's in charge or responsible for
You know, who, who's in charge or responsible for that roadway maintenance? And we don't even add ourselves into that mix and, and getting brought into the filing of a claim because we didn't do something when in fact we had the responsibility to do anything in the first place.
Right, I'm just, it's, man, you know, that it takes them months to fix.
Well, when you stop and, and I'm not making excuses for them,
Right.
when you stop and take a look at the transition from, through the spring, and with as wet as it was, and the late snowfalls and everything, and the maintenance crews, that when you take a look at the number of lane miles that they have in District 7, and the amount of staff that they have, is that
Okay, well, I can report back to the people that have asked me about it, so
If you want, if you want, we can make up a, a telephone number and an email, uh, to Minna District 7, if you'd like to provide them with that.
You know, that wouldn't be a bad idea, maybe we should put it in our newsletter, too. Just explain it in the newsletter that it's
You could have wrote that article.
I should have wrote that, you're right. Rick, I want my money back.
Tough.
Well, you can write about it, but, but we should, because there's a lot of
I'll get to it in the next letter.
There's a lot of miscommunication out there, people don't understand that that's Yeah, I'll say something. the state's responsibility, so.
Anything else?
Uh, no, that was a Rick? Yep.
Bruce?
Um, you, you can see in your EDA minutes that, uh, item number five, it talks about the joint meeting that was set up by city staff, and might get set up with Saint, with the Chamber of Commerce, while sitting on the marketing committee, to help with the Main Street project, to help the businesses and, and foster commerce as this project goes along. At the last EDA meeting, so in June, EDA determined to proceed with that concept and credit fund late, funding up to 25, no less than 25,000, but a number to be determined later for this marketing initiative, which will be, um, organized or, or steering by a committee, uh, which some of them may be chamber members, but trying to encourage and solicit people that have businesses or own businesses on Main Street to be involved in that phase. Just a heads up on that, that is taking place as we speak.
Anything else?
Bruce, can I ask something?
I guess I'd just like to finish with congratulating the new great baseball team, making it to the finals on Thursday. Uh, I know that we also, on our calendar, we have that meeting at 5:00 on Thursday with our IT, uh, True North, is it? Going over the, um, recommendations on, uh, our IT system, so I'll see everyone then. And I'm excited, I don't have anything else, so I guess I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Seconded by Rick Seiler, all in fair say aye?
Aye.
Aye, any opposition? All right, well, thank you, everyone.